Before we start, I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast, Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on Assistant City Clerk Jennifer Smith for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles is absent today. Councilman Williams?
Here.
Councilman Worthy is absent today. Councilman Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have court in present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we love you and we thank you for this day. We thank you for life. We thank you for the health you've given us. We thank you for this great city. And God, we pray that as the new administration is preparing to step in, we pray for Craig Ford and his transition team, for all those he'll be bringing in with him. We pray for the new council members who will be taking their seat here soon. God, we just pray as a city that we'll move forward and we'll have no reason to ever look back. We promise to give the praise to you. Thank you for who you are, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Number five, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on October 4th.
So moved, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Number six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 30th through October 6th.
So moved, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Okay. Number seven is proclamations. Do we have any proclamations this morning? Okay. Number eight, unfinished business. Is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 3516 Forest Avenue in District 6. This resolution was tabled 30 days on September 6th. There's a recommendation for the building official to table the resolution additional 30 days. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move we give them a 30-day extension, please, till they can have time to get the title work on this done, please.
Second.
Okay. In discussion? Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to table for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table 30 days.
Number nine, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 309 Roseland Drive in District 2. State of Alabama Jackie McCormick and Kim F. Parker doing business as Parker Company, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anybody opposed? All total is in favor.
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case involves a burned house. We filed it in March of this year. They've been, I'm sorry, March of last year, there've been no improvements and no permits to improve. And we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 522 Cochran Alley in District 3, and Janetta O. Rogers being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Any opposed? Anyone to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case, and I know that the picture is going to be difficult to see, the structure, the next case as well. Thomas Worthy had, Councilman Worthy had asked us to look at these and we had to get him to go out and show us exactly where they were. This first case involves a mobile home. You can see it behind the overgrowth there. We actually filed it in October of 2020. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve and we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Number 11, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 553 West Megan Boulevard in District 3. And Janetta O. Rogers, also known as Angelita O. Rogers, subject to equitable rights and redemption of any of the estate of Lavanda Lowens, being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Any opposed? Any in favor?
Mr. President, this case is right across the street from the mobile home you just looked at pictures of. We filed the case on the same day in October of 2020. There are no improvements, no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
In discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 2824 West Megan Boulevard in District 6. Gary C. Alexander being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, based on recent improvements, we're asking for a 30-day table. Thank you.
Okay.
Was anyone here wanting to speak against this? 2824?
Yes.
West Megan?
Come forward, please, ma'am.
Hello.
Could you just state your name and address?
Rhonda Watts, 2822 West Megan. I've been trying, you want me to just go ahead and tell you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've been trying for about, gosh, it seems like about two years to get this property cleaned up and abated. I have a lot of pictures here. I don't have everything that was on my phone, if y'all like to see the pictures. Mr. Alexander started just this past Thursday. He got a dumpster in there. I talked to the men that were working this morning and they said there's probably 10 times more garbage that's left in the house. There's huge rats. The rats are digging through the dirt under my garage coming in my house. There's some pictures that have, where the sheetrock's been repaired in my garage. I really don't want to get emotional and I don't want to get too graphic, but-
That's correct.
-there's so much that's happened there. I mean, I'm a single person living there trying to keep my home improved and there's people that come there that sleep. There's no water, no power. They defecate, empty their colostomy bags out, just in the yard when I have company. Urinate. It's just a trap to me for people that don't have a place to go. They've hit my fence. I've had to have my fence replaced. I mean, I understand Mr. Alexander's, they're working today. It's my understanding he's wanting to move the house, which you can see the house is not, it doesn't look like it could be moved to me. He's told me before he was going to get it cleaned up and some of the pictures that have the date, they did come and clean, but then his son came back and they started all over again. I've watched some of the city council meetings on YouTube and, you know, I've heard people say you wouldn't want to live next to this. I don't like living next to that right there. I've lived there almost 10, over 10 years.
How long has it been in that condition in the 10 years you've been there?
A long time.
Since '20. 12/12 is when the case first started. I'm sorry.
It looks like these pictures, I guess from a few days ago, I mean, he's filled that whole roll-up dumpster with debris.
Three times. And the guy this morning said there's at least three more.
Loads.
Loads.
Yeah.
But my thing is if he keeps getting extensions on these building permits where they're supposed to be improving, but there's that much garbage inside, how can that be? How can they be doing any improvements?
How many times has the police been out there?
Several times.
What have they been?
Many times.
What have they been out there for?
I've called because people will be out there after dark. When the police come, they'll say there's a pink building permit on the window. They have a right to be here. But no one's in there working after dark. No one's in there working, period.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We've got a recommendation for the Building Department for a 30-day table on this. Brian, you think if we cut that in half, he would, to 14 days, that would help the situation?
I haven't been privy to the history, what I've just heard. That's your district. You pass it.
I've had a ton of calls.
I'll remove the house.
I was hoping some of the people, I think there's some more people back there that could speak against it. I don't know if they are or not today, but, you know.
Based on that, what's the recommendation of the council?
My recommendation is to, Brian's got a 30-day table on it. My recommendation is to abate the nuisance and just get rid of this problem.
All right.
But I would tell you now, this is not going to happen overnight. You know, this house won't, it won't happen tomorrow, so, you know, there's no reason to think it will. It'd be put on a list and then when it goes up to the list, that's when they abate the nuisance. How far are they out now, Brian, you know?
Oh, six. Probably several dozen. Probably as much as we can do.
And you know, if the owner goes to court, he's got a right to go to court and pay attorney's fees to overrule this council. Y'all know that, don't you? He can do that also. So I just want to let you know, it doesn't really stop right here. They can go, he can go ahead if he wanted to. But I thought to abate the nuisance myself.
All right, we got them. Hold on a second, okay. In discussion? Any further? Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Number 13, our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 3502 West Megan Boulevard in District 6. Christopher Callahan and possible rights of redemption of James Roy Spencer being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a burned structure. We filed it in January of '21. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve and we're asking for a resolution today to abate the
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council?
I make a move, a motion to abate this nuisance, please.
Okay.
Second.
In discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Okay. New business. Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I have an ordinance that I requested from the Legal Department authorizing the operation of a medical cannabis dispensary within the corporate limits of the City of Gadsden. Just to elaborate a little bit, the state had passed this statewide resolution or law back in May of 2021 and each individual municipality has to opt in or opt out of the statewide program. So this is just opting the City of Gadsden in to let them know that we're open for business and this would include dispensaries or cultivators or processes of, processors of medical cannabis. And I'd like to ask for immediate consideration of this today, please.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance under new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
I have one, please, and I apologize for not getting with everybody about this this morning, but after we broke the pre-council meeting, a guy that's authorizing a special use per permit at 1044 Sidney Drive, this is a special use permit for Verizon Wireless to modify their equipment in existing wireless telecommunications facility located at 1044 Sidney Drive in Gadsden, Alabama. They're having some problems, they are up there, and a representative from the cellphone people tells us if we all get this passed today, they'll be starting work tomorrow where they have better reception up there. And I ask for unanimous consent on this, please.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Move to number 15, Department of Reports, Committees, Boards, and so on. Craig Scott, Library Director, upcoming library events.
Mr. President, Council, and I'll keep this short. So, the library's very excited that we're going to have a rising pop singer from Nashville coming into Gadsden on Thursday, October 20th, next week. And she's going to be putting on a concert. It'll start at 5:30. And it's intended for our young adults, for our teenagers. She has an anti-bullying message and she's got a lot of Youtubes that are out there and we're just excited to have her in town and I wanted to get the word out to the community to come and celebrate with us. We'll have food trucks there and should be a good event.
Great. Thank you. Way to go. Up town. Okay. Any other reports? Number 16 is citizen request. We have Teresa Helms, Taylor, and Tara Fulford. Never Surrender Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Hello. Good morning, good afternoon.
Morning.
I guess morning still. I'm Tara. This is Teresa. Like you said, we're with Never Surrender, the breast cancer organization here in town. We represent Etowah and Calhoun County. And I guess we're just here today to kind of give a reminder of the Pink Can Project that we had going on and kind of give an update on where, what we've done with that. First of all, Never Surrender, to give a little background, we started here in Gadsden in 2010 in October. And we, when we started out, we didn't intend on being a source. We were there just to kind of navigate people towards a source of financial help or if they needed mammograms, a way to go through other programs to get what they needed. So fast forward to now, we have become kind of the source for some of the people in Etowah County and Calhoun County. And as far as anybody who needs a mammogram and early detection, we are the ones who are out promoting that the most. That is our number one goal, is just to let everybody know early detection. And October is the month where we hit the ground running, so we've been busy, it seems like since mid-September, just going, going, going. I was like, I don't know when October started, in mid-September, but it did. So, so far with the pink cans, through the city, the first cans that we saw, we did the 85 and those, we got a check from the city for 2125. And then Advanced Imaging, they sponsored the other 50 cans. So we actually, instead of just the 25, through Advanced Imaging with that, we get the whole $95 for those 50 cans. So that's a potential for us to raise $6,780. And to date, we've already done $3,265 just for this year. So that's really good for a new project. And just something else, so you guys know I'm really proud of this number, since we've been doing this about 11 or 12 years now. Total that we put back and give back to Etowah and Calhoun County just from Never Surrender is $454,035. So I like to say close to half a million, because that sounds really way cool.
That's right.
Thank you guys for having us and starting this Pink Can Project with us. It's things like this that get us to where we are and are able to give back this amount of money to our community. So we didn't know there was a place and a need for our community until we got this started and it snowballed and we're just happy to do what we do.
Here we are. Thank you.
The City of Gadsden, though, has been so supportive over the years and a lot of people, when they see us out, they're like, thank you for what you do. We just spearhead that. It's really the community that comes together and supports all the different fundraisers that we do. We have several during the month of October. We have several even just businesses that'll say, can I just do, can we do something even for a day, like in our office? And they may hand us a check for $500 or $600. And those, even small amounts continue to grow us and get to that half a million dollars. So we hope that even now since that Never Surrender has gotten a little bit larger, we feel like, that it won't take us that many years to get to the other half a million so that we can say that we've raised a million dollars. So we appreciate the community helping us get there. So we're, I think our goal now is maybe the next three to four years, then we'll hit the million mark.
Right.
Congratulations.
Thank y'all so much.
Hey, can I ask a quick question, Tara, just because, number one, thank you for what you guys do and thank you to Councilman Back for spearheading the Pink Trashcan Initiative. That's been great. But speaking to that, despite all the efforts we did last year to get the word out about those pink trashcans, every time I put mine out on the street, about 10 of my neighbors say, man, where can I get one of those things? So do you guys still have some available and what would be the approach to reach out to you guys about getting one?
So we have about 35 still available. They are, you can call Advanced Imaging. The people who work there, they all know the questions to ask and the information to take down to get those done. It's funny, I do know whenever the people who have them, when the cans go out, because I think it's like, there's a couple communities that have several cans and I can tell when it's been trash day, because I get two or three phone calls, but like, tell me how to get one of those pink cans. So, yeah, that's, every week almost.
I'm not kidding. Not a week goes by that I put mine out that one of my neighbors doesn't say, where can I get one? So thank you for, they can just call Advanced Imaging. I will pass the word along, I promise.
And what people may issue as well, we've had several people just to purchase the pink trashcans that do not live in Gadsden. They just use it as an additional trashcan.
Sure.
To store, to, you know, whatever that they need to do. Maybe they dump somewhere else, but they just want, they think the pink trashcans are really cool and they know it's going for a great cause. So even if you don't live in the City of Gadsden and don't have this particular program, we can still sell you a pink trashcan.
Well, I'm just going to laminate that and tape it to the front of my trashcan. If you want one of these, call Advanced Imaging.
And when you guys go to order, I guess you order every other year for the cans, we would be interested in trying to do this again, so keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all for going. Okay. Remarks both the Mayor and the City Council. Derek, would you like to start us off?
Yes. Councilman Reed, I appreciate that. Just a couple quick things. I do want to thank, last week was my birthday and, of course, a number of people pulled together and organized an appreciation event on last week for me and it was great turnout. I want to thank, you know, Brian Harbison for showing and as well as Councilman Back. And Councilman Back actually stuck around long enough to say a few very kind words. Very good turnout and I am very fortunate to have some amazing family and a lot of real, true friends. I was sharing this morning with somebody that you, you know, a lot of us live a lifetime and never have any true friends. But I've been fortunate to have many. I have many true friends and I had a really good weekend, birthday weekend. So again, I want to thank everybody for the kind words, the recognition, the birthday well wishes and all that came with it. It really meant a lot. Probably the last controversial thing, or close to controversial thing I'm going to say before I have my last meeting is this. Tommy Tuberville, Senator Tommy Tuberville owes every Alabamian an apology. He owes us all an apology. I have never been more embarrassed. We go to a lot of national events. We often get hit, and these guys can attest to it, we often get hit, we're the butt of jokes because of the behavior of our national and statewide elected officials. We have, he owes us an apology. He owes us an apology. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah. Okay. Would you like to go?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say thank you again to Teresa and to Tara for what you do for our community and our counties, both Etowah and Calhoun County. Those are great numbers, half a million dollars you've raised, all for the common good of people that really need that kind of help. So just want to reiterate, early detection is what saves lives. My wife is an example of that and six years now, cancer-free, and so sure means a lot to the families when you get to be able to say that statement. So pay attention and get a pink garbage can. It'd be great to have a pink can at every house in the City of Gadsden. Also want to just put a plug in for the Gadsden Sports Park. This weekend, there was, you couldn't find a parking place over there. Heath, the parking lot's not big enough, so. It's teams, there was a soccer tournament there. Teams were from all over the state, from Dothan, I think, Fairhope, all over Birmingham, Huntsville. And I had word from Scott that's over that field, that he was walking around talking to people that, from out of town, and they commented at how nice it was, how first-class our sports park is. And they had been here in previous years before the construction and they're just blown away. It's just a remarkable place and we're not through. There's still work being done over there, so there's still dirt being moved and projects being completed. Faces are still in process, so really great things are happening over there. Great things are happening in Gadsden. In addition to that, we had over 500 gymnasts at the venue this weekend. You couldn't find a parking place at the venue. And the teams were from, and participants from all over the southeast, various states came and had, from what, all indication, a great time. Our city was really, served well this weekend, the last first Friday of the year, probably another 10, 15,000 people downtown Gadsden. That means they're going to our restaurants, they're staying at our hotels, they're buying gasoline, they're shopping at our stores when they forget things, when they get here and they realize they didn't bring their cleats or they didn't bring enough socks or whatever it is that they didn't bring for their teams and things. So really a good weekend in Gadsden. The weather cooperated. It was really nice and I do want to echo Councilman Williams. Had a nice time of, at his reception and birthday party and he has a lot of good friends, y'all, and I know that's no surprise, but I was honored to be there, was honored to be able to ask to speak and say a few words and, not to belabor the point, but we're, you know, Councilman Wilson and I are the two incumbents that are coming back and five aren't coming back. And, you know, we're going to miss our fellow council members. In spite of what may have been transpired over the last four years, there's been a lot of growth in Gadsden. You know, sometimes you have to go through some things in order to grow and you come out the other side a lot stronger and I think you're going to see that in Gadsden. This group that is leaving has provided a lot of leadership. Jason and I have had the, Councilman Wilson, excuse me, and I have had the pleasure of sitting at the feet of these folks up here and learn. As I've said before, this isn't as easy as it looks. There's a lot of moving parts to be a city council member and a lot to learn. It's a 50-plus million dollar budget, 500 or so employees, I think 20-something departments. It's a really big business and it's, and you have to really keep your eyes open and listen to what's being said. And we've had good leaders, we've had good information that we've learned from our fellow council members and you guys are going to be missed and looking forward to the future, but don't want to miss a point, a chance to say thank you. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your service to the city of Gadsden. And I know we've still got some more meetings, but I just don't want those opportunities to pass. And also with Councilman Williams' last remark, and I'll close with that. In November, I'll go to Kansas City for the National League of Cities meeting and will be the butt of those jokes because of our failed leadership at the top. You know, that's the same senator that didn't take the money that he could have to bring back to Alabama in his first year. I think now he's learned that he's going to take that money. And so there's just a lot of gaps that we seem to encounter with our leadership at the top and that's why it's so important to vote. That's why it's important to read and pay attention to who you're voting for and not just pull a lever because it has a certain color on it. You got to pay attention. You got to think these things through. There's a lot of ramifications when we don't do that, so, and most of the time, they're negative ramifications. So I appreciate you saying that and I'm in full agreement with your statement. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Yeah, well, I want to start off by saying good morning to everybody except for the Philadelphia Phillies. Good luck, Max Fried today, first pitch in about 35 minutes, I think, so let's wrap this up. We're now nine days removed from our River Fest event and I just want to thank the Public Works Department and the Parks and Rec Department, specifically the Legal Department, for stepping up and helping us pull that concert off. We were very happy with it and I thank the guests and the citizens of Gadsden who attended, we're really happy with it, but we couldn't have done it without simple things that most people don't think about when you're putting on a concert, like barricades and signs telling people where to park and things like that. So thank you. Also, thank you to the Etowah County Sheriff's Office and the Gadsden Police Department for all their help in traffic control and security. That was an awesome event, thank you. Also want to say thank you again to Never Surrender for everything you guys have done. I can relate. You set out just trying to, try and do some good and next thing you know, you end up being the phone number that everybody calls and, you know, I'm constantly reminded of a quote and the author escapes me right now, but the quote is, you know, "Responsibility gravitates to the shoulders of those who can handle it." So that responsibility has gravitated to you guys because you do such a great job. So thank you for what you've done for women all over Etowah County and Calhoun County. One thing I want to say, speaking of the Gadsden Sports Park, to the pickleball community in Gadsden, we hear you. We have heard your outcries and I promise you, as part of Phase Three of this sports park, we have addressed some of those concerns and I look forward to having some opportunities to host some pickleball local events here soon over as part of our Gadsden Sports Park. And finally, the ordinance that we passed today, I just want to clarify the medical cannabis ordinance. Again, we do not have a current applicant for a business license in this industry, but what this does is it opens up the possibility, as a deadline looms here next week, for these applications to be received or applied for from the state. Now, at least Gadsden proper will be on that list of cities who do allow this. So hopefully that does keep us in the running for some of these large industrial medical cannabis operations that can generate significant amounts of tax dollars. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Johnny?
I don't have anything today.
Okay. Once again, thank you all for coming, being a part of this meeting. Motion adjourned.
Submove.
Bye.